Do this again. It is now 7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, June 15, 2020. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubis?
Here.
Mr. Raisak?
Here.
Ms. Peal?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Raisak.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We are all present and we have a quorum. Ms. Peal, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For our public, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be July 13. The Board of Education will be meeting on June 17 at 6:00 PM for our annual meeting with a representative from the Illinois Association of School Boards for our annual workshop. This workshop will be with Dr. Tally to go over norms and communication. That meeting will be held in executive session and no action will be taken at that meeting. As you know, Boards of Education are bound by strict provisions of the Open Meetings Act. And as Board President, I have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the pandemic. With the outset of COVID-19, some of the OMA guidelines have been relaxed. Specifically, Board members do not have to be physically present. As a result, video or audio conferencing is allowed. Boards are encouraged to provide video or audio access to meetings in order that the public may monitor the meetings. All other open meeting requirements remain in place. Quorum of the Board must participate. All meetings must be open to the public, except any portion of the meeting that is closed for one or more reasons in the act. Meeting must include an opportunity for public comment. And finally, the requirement relating to meeting notices, agendas, and minutes still remain applicable. With that, we move to public comment. We do have one person who has signed up for public comment. So it is now time for public comment. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and ask as such that you consider who your audience members are this evening and keep comments age appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our speaker today is Katie Pop. Katie?
Katie, you're on mute.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Katie.
All right. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Karen Sullivan, Doug Akarius, Kathy Pease, Jay Strang, and the entire 204 administration as we navigated through the last few months of remote learning. Specifically, I'd like to thank the School Board for taking the time to honor our retirees. While this is not the way our teachers would have liked to end their career in education, we appreciate you recognizing their dedication to the students of District 204. I would like to thank Laura Johnston, Kathy Pease, and Dr. Karen Sullivan for their service to the students and staff of District 204. We hope you enjoy this next chapter in your life and may you always feel that District 204 is a place you can call home. To say this school year was full of challenges would be an understatement. We look forward to collaborating with you as we navigate and plan what school will look like in the fall. And as always, we will continue to partner with you to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And that ends our public comment. As Katie alluded to, this is really our last School Board meeting of the year. We began a new school year in July. And as is that custom, the Board would like to take this opportunity to recognize our administrative retirees. We have several, so I'm going to begin. Ms. Grover, we're going to honor Kim Erlinbaum.
You're on mute. Natasha?
Thank you. Whereas, Kim Erlinbaum has devoted the past seventeen years of her career working with students in Indian Prairie School District 204. And whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum began her career at Gregory Middle School as Assistant Principal and also served as Principal at McCarty Elementary before becoming Principal at Owen Elementary. And whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum has adopted a kids-first attitude in everything she does. It includes the phrase in her email signature and implemented a Kids Council to involve students in projects and programs at Owen Elementary. And whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum is loved by students and staff and families in the Owen Elementary. And whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum is loved by students, staff, and families in the Owen Elementary community and will be missed by many. And whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum has modeled hard work, dedication, and kindness to each and every student. Are you just lost?
Is it my turn?
No, no, it's still my turn. Sorry, I just lost that place. Whereas, Ms. Erlinbaum has modeled hard work, dedication, kindness to each and every student. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Ms. Erlinbaum's dedication and devotion to the students, teachers, and parents of our community by creating a caring environment which always places children's first. We are immensely grateful for all that she has done for our students. Although we will miss her kindness and her commitment to students in District 204, we wish her all the best in her future endeavors.
Thank you. Ms. Erlinbaum, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, certainly. I want to thank each and every one of you, Board members, Mike, Karen, everyone, and our families in the district for helping me along the years learn and grow and continue to build that passion that I've always had for being a teacher and as an administrator to ensure that we help promote and provide an opportunity for all students to succeed. And I truly believe that. I always go by a quote of, you know, "together." I don't think this is quote-unquote correctly, but I always believe that together we're able to accomplish so much more when we work together than we could ever alone. And that's how I feel our district is and our families. We are so connected and that has just been a wonderful experience for these last seventeen years. And I heard them say about being home, I think Katie said, and I will always consider 204 home. It's hard to break ties. But one of the things I would like to share is as I close my career, comes to a close here, which I don't think it'll ever be because I'll always be a servant leader. But one of the things, when I first started at Gregory, I met a young lady there. And through these years, I have continued to keep in contact with her as she has pursued her interests of what she would like to continue to do. And I am just so thrilled to see that as I, you know, move on to another adventure, she is now beginning her adventure as a new District 204 Speech and Language Pathologist with us. And so it's just, you know, as one kind of door closes, another opens. And I wish everyone the best. And thank you again for this wonderful recognition. I greatly appreciate it.
Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you so much, Mike.
We are now going to honor Cecilia Tobin and Mark Rising will be the honors.
I will try not to get emotional. Whereas Cecilia Tobin has devoted her entire twenty-one years in District 204 as a Student Service Coordinator and Principal at Indian Plains High School and Wheaton Academy. And whereas, Ms. Tobin has been a driving force for students who have struggled and a tireless advocate for serving their needs. And whereas, Ms. Tobin is a compassionate leader and takes great pride in the work she does to serve all students at Wheaton Academy with her kindness and generosity. And whereas, Ms. Tobin has a flair for creativity and has used her talents to decorate various spaces at Wheaton Academy to create a warm and welcoming environment. And whereas, Ms. Tobin is vested in every student's success and her favorite day of the year is graduation day, as ours, where she can proudly witness the culmination of her students' hard work. And whereas, Ms. Tobin is a solid leader who has built a strong bond with staff who trust and appreciate her leadership. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Ms. Tobin's dedication and devotion to the students, teachers, and parents of our community for creating a compassionate and caring environment which always focuses on the needs of her students. We are immensely grateful for all that she has done in helping students find their path and succeed. Although we will miss her kindness and her commitment to District 204, we wish her all the best in her future endeavors.
Thanks, Mark. Cecilia, would you like to share a few words?
Well, first of all, Mr. Rising, that was very, very sweet and appreciated. You know, it is funny to kind of be here at the end of a career. It seems like it hasn't been that long, but twenty-one years in District 204 has been kind of a blink of an eye for me. So many memories and so many good people that I've worked with and so many great kids and parents that it's just been the most rewarding time of my life. And we couldn't do what we do at Wheaton and previously at Indian Plains without the support of the Board of Education because we are a very special environment. And because we have been supported by you over the years, we've been able to do what we do for kids. And the people that have always been on our team have known that we've had your support. And you knew that we were going to do everything that we could for kids who struggle. And I know that they will continue to do that after I go. I have every confidence of that. But it has really been quite an experience for me and it will last.
Okay. Thanks, Cecilia, and happy retirement.
Thank you so much.
We will now move to honoring Laura Johnston, Susan Demming.
Whereas, proclamation for Laura Johnston. Whereas, Laura Johnston has spent the past twenty-three years of her thirty-eight-year career in education working with the children of District 204 as a Behavior Management Specialist, Student Services Supervisor, Principal, and Assistant Superintendent. And whereas, she started in District 204 as a Behavior Management Specialist in 1997. She also served as a Supervisor of Student Services before becoming the Principal at Longwood Elementary in 2006. And in 2015, she became the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education. And whereas, as the Principal of Longwood, she brought data into conversations about student growth and progress, embraced inclusion, brought a focus to social-emotional learning, and started a reading model called FLODding, where all students receive guided reading every day, which led Longwood Elementary to become a model positive behavioral interventions and supports school. And whereas, Ms. Johnston signed off her principal announcements with, "It's a great day to learn." And after thirty-eight years in education, she still believes it's a great day to learn and continues learning every day. And whereas, as an Assistant Superintendent, she increased mental health support across all elementary schools, worked with principals on discipline alternatives such as restorative practices, helped principals better understand trauma and foreign practices, simplified interventions for elementary schools. And whereas, Ms. Johnston is known for her willingness to provide support for any students, teachers, or principals for creative, out-of-the-box thinking and ability to problem solve effectively and efficiently. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Laura Johnston's devotion to the students, parents, and teachers of our district. We are grateful for her kind and compassionate leadership and all that she has done for our students. We wish her all the best in her retirement endeavors.
Thank you, Susan. Laura, would you like to share a few words with us?
Sure. I just want to thank you, Board of Education, first of all, for recognizing me. Maybe I start my video. Nope, there you go. For the recognition and for the support that you've always given all of our schools, I really appreciate it. It is a great day to learn. It always is. And I started that phrase at Longwood because I wanted people to focus on learning and really understanding that piece. People ask me why I have been in 204 for twenty-three years and I tell them that this is an innovative district because we think about what we need to do for kids. And because of that, because we're like a half a step ahead of things, sometimes things come a little bit easier. And so we could do things like move to remote learning in just a very short time because we were already prepped for that. So I will continue to think that it's a great day to learn for the rest of my life, but I won't be learning in 204 all the time. But I will be thinking of you all and I know that the learning will continue.
Thank you, Laura. Congratulations and have a great retirement.
Thank you.
Justin Carubis will now honor Kathy Pease.
Kathy Pease has devoted twenty-eight years of her career working with the children of District 204 as a teacher, Student Service Coordinator, Assistant Principal, Principal, Executive Director, and Chief Academic Officer. And whereas, she started her career in District 204 as a teacher at Cloud Elementary School in 1985, the year after I graduated Cloud. Since then, she has been a teacher and Student Service Coordinator at Springbrook Elementary, Student Service Coordinator, and Assistant Principal at Young Elementary, and Principal at Springbrook Elementary. And whereas, she was called upon to best serve the entire district as Executive Director of Elementary Education and later as Chief Academic Officer. And whereas, as Chief Academic Officer, she led the district's Portrait of a Graduate Community Engagement Sessions, shared the vision with staff throughout the district, and worked to ensure concepts were embedded in the curriculum. And whereas, Ms. Pease launched the Indian Prairie Podcast to provide additional professional development opportunities for staff by sharing conversations around best practices and innovation within District 204 schools. And whereas, Ms. Pease has overseen the Social-Emotional Learning Program in District 204, enhancing students' capacity to integrate skills, attitudes, and behaviors to deal effectively and ethically with daily tasks and challenges. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Kathy Pease's devotion to the students, parents, and teachers of our district. We are grateful for her innovation and creative spirit and all that she has done for our students. We wish her all the best in her retirement endeavors. Kathy Pease, take the podium.
Well, thank you. It's interesting that you say I came right after you. That wasn't planned in 1985. I was lucky enough and I'd be remiss not to mention Carl Pennell, who gave me my start in this district, so I want to thank him. But I want to thank the Board for tonight. But for my entire career, the Board members have been very supportive. I want to thank all of the staff members that I've been fortunate enough to work with, administrators, teachers, lunchroom supervisors, the students and the families, and just everybody who along the way has helped me to grow as an educator. I've taken something from every interaction and it's all been very important to me to have that. I want to wish the district, it's an exciting time in education moving forward. There's a lot going on and I know that you will serve our students well and I'm excited to see what happens next. Thank you for tonight and thank you for your time throughout this career that I've had. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And finally, Kathy Peal will honor Dr. Karen Sullivan.
Okay. All right. Whereas, Dr. Karen Sullivan began her career in 1981 as a Speech and Language Pathologist in the Flossmore-Based South Metropolitan Association. She went on to lead the group's parent-infant program and later was named the Director of Grants and Special Projects. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan has spent twenty-three years as an educator in Indian Prairie School District 204 and was hired in 1995 as the Principal of Prairie Children Preschool, became Director of Student Services in 2000, began serving as Principal at College Shaw Elementary in 2005, and became Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources in 2011. And whereas, because of her strong leadership skills and collaborative team-building approach, she was named Superintendent in 2014. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan brought forth the idea of creating a portrait of a graduate and invited stakeholders to embark on the process of identifying and prioritizing the competencies desired in all students by the time they graduate to enhance their success now and in the future. And whereas, as Superintendent, she always valued community outreach and input and oversaw the Engage 204 process that provided valuable guidance to the Board of Education. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan is one of one hundred and fourteen superintendents selected from across the nation to serve on the League of Innovative Schools as part of the Digital Promise Initiative of the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan has been a fierce watchdog over school funding and has kept an eye on the budget process in Springfield, always advocating for students and protecting taxpayers. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan has been a tireless advocate for at-risk students. During her tenure as Superintendent, Value Runway, Back on the Track, and the IPEF Kid Essentials Fund were launched to help support at-risk students. And whereas, under Dr. Sullivan's leadership as Superintendent, students achieved a record-setting ACT score and performed significantly higher than state averages on standardized tests. She has continued to prepare students for their futures, guiding the district in its one-to-one technology plan that placed technology in the hands of students at all levels. And whereas, Dr. Sullivan's stoic leadership in the face of a global pandemic guided students, staff, and families on the successful implementation of remote learning for more than two months. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the District 204 Board of Education, Administration, and Community honor Dr. Karen Sullivan for devoting twenty-three years to District 204, for always putting students first, encouraging staff to focus on what matters, and for her countless hours of service. We wish her the very best as she retires from Indian Prairie and embarks on new adventures. Karen?
Dr. Sullivan?
Well, thank you very much. I do think that one of the best decisions I ever made was finally saying yes to Judy Hackett when she kept calling me to come and supervise the Early Childhood Program way back in ninety-five. So it's been a great run and a great career. I appreciate all the opportunities that I got and the people who believed in me to let me try some different things, which, you know, led to finishing my career as Superintendent, which I couldn't think of a better way to end my career. Maybe not in a pandemic, but it was a great end to my career. You know, I want to thank, you know, the amazing teachers we have in this district, the community that is so focused on education and there for us whenever we need them. I think I saw Dr. Tally on the list of participants. So I want to say to you, you picked a great school district, got a great School Board to work with, you've got great administrators. You're really going to love it and I hope you, you know, spend a good chunk of your career here in Indian Prairie. So I'm going to thank all of you. Appreciate the proclamation and the accolades and the visits with my bowl. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Before we do go to that consult agenda and last Superintendent report, I think it's clear that this is a bittersweet meeting for the Board of Education. It's the last meeting with you, Dr. Sullivan. It's the last meeting with our Board Secretary, Jackie Horvath. We consider you, the Board does, as you're our mentors, you're our colleague, and you guys are our friends also. And with that, I would ask Lori Donahue to say a few words to Jackie, who's been with us the six years. So Ms. Donahue?
Jackie, only a subset of people understand the amount of effort and organization required to effectively run our district. You have been our foundational support to make that possible, from the biggest to the smallest items, like always making sure Mike has a pair of glasses available or Justin has his computer. You have been our support. Many thanks. After contemplating the best words to congratulate you on retirement, I decided to borrow from the summary of your nomination by our Board to the Illinois Association of School Boards for the Holly Jack Outstanding Service Award, which we all believed should have been awarded to you. But anyways, to quote, "With Jackie's retirement, we will miss her friendly demeanor, her wit, dedication to our students and community. She serves as a model for all administrative assistants. She is our Hall of Fame Administrative Assistant. Ms. Jackie Horvath is a dedicated superwoman who hits a homerun every time. On behalf of the Board, with much gratitude for your service, we wish you a happy and healthy retirement and many visits to Disney and lots of great food. You will be greatly missed."
Thank you, Lori. Jackie, I don't know if you can, but you want to say a few words?
I would like to say thank you. This was most unexpected. Your kind words are much appreciated and I don't have a tissue. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Dr. Sullivan, one last time.
All right. Are you ready?
No.
Yeah.
The Board has a few words for you. So displaying your wonderful sense of humor and impeccable comedic timing, you uttered these following words. Wow, what a career. I began my tenure as Superintendent with the Senate Bill I funding crisis and leave with a pandemic. Wow, what a career. I began my tenure as Superintendent with the Senate Bill 1 funding crisis and leave with a pandemic. Clearly, the work of a large district superintendent is fraught with pitfalls and problems. Over the course of your six-year career, you have navigated quite a few issues. Senate Bill 1, providing balanced budgets, air conditioning schools, negotiating TIF agreements, and the pandemic are just a few of the major calamities that needed to be addressed. Yet each one of these issues were handled with Sullivan's style and grace. More importantly, your valuing leadership permeated decision-making. Children, parents, staff always came first. No ego. Servant leadership and dedication was always displayed. But despite the major issues that need immediate attention during the course of a career, clearly, our worth and our satisfaction is more defined by simple everyday events. As Superintendent, you orchestrated joy, laughter, and the success of thousands. As a Board member, it was a pleasure to watch your reaction to everyday happenings. Your smile and sense of pride was evident. You clearly understood that in every moment, there is treasure and you always gave your best. So when reflecting on your career, forget those crises. Remember the first day of school, your welcome speech of encouragement to staff, any concert or play, robotics and STEM events, cheering for our high school sport teams, graduations, when a parent comes to you and tells you that their child now is successful and adult, and finally, the giggle and wonder of a preschool child. On behalf of the Board, we thank you for all your contributions to the students, family, and staff of Indian Prairie. You will be missed, but enjoy your retirement as well deserved. So, thank you again, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
And now you can give that.
Now I can give.
Report.
All right, now I can give that final report. Okay. All right, this is our fourth virtual school board meeting we've held as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I want to thank, again, our Technology Department led by Adam Smits for all the behind-the-scenes work necessary to hold this meeting. It looks like magic, but there's a lot of work that goes behind, so thank you, Adam. We also want to give kudos to Adam and his tech services team for launching Synergy, our new SIS, in the middle of a pandemic, not the best of, best timing, but they've done a great job and I know they've been working very hard behind the scenes with the launch of registration for our parents. Last week, each of our high schools individually delivered graduation boxes to each of our seniors. And yesterday, we celebrated 2,266 students graduating from Indian Prairie through our virtual graduation ceremonies. This is obviously not what anyone had planned, but I want to commend our media departments and the administration at each of our high schools for their tremendous effort to make those ceremonies meaningful. They did a great job. I know that all of us are anxious about what school looked like in the fall and later in tonight's meeting, staff will share some of the behind-the-scenes planning. However, we are still awaiting guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education and I assume, I know that as soon as we know more about what the reopening of schools will look like, our team will inform the community. The guidance from the state regarding summer school came too late for us to pivot in just a few days for our extended school year program and that program began last week and is being held remotely. Our administration and athletic directors are reviewing the IHSA guidance for resuming limited, small-group conditioning workouts and will communicate when we feel we have a plan to safely resume any kind of small groups of 10. We will continue to provide grab-and-go breakfasts and lunches for families in need over the summer. We are currently serving over 4,400 meals per day. Our distribution sites will remain the same, which is at each of our elementary buildings, and meals are available from 11:00 to 1:00, so please see our website for further information. And Adam already put up some of our slides. So this is our first board meeting since the end of the school year and so we want to acknowledge our staff members who are retiring, other than those of us you've already acknowledged. We have a total of 55 staff members retiring and given the circumstances, we obviously couldn't have the typical retirement events at our school. So we really appreciate the Board of Education members hand-delivered to each of our retirees and you'll see some of the pictures throughout these slides of them collecting some of those. We had 37 members of our Teachers Association, eight members of IPCA, four non-bargaining employees, and five administrators retiring as of June 30th. We want to thank them for their 1,368 total years of service to Indian Prairie District 204 and I'm sure none of them, including myself, could have imagined ending our careers over a computer screen, but here we are. They've all contributed to the success of our school district and our students and we wish them well as they enter a new chapter in their lives. And that is my final Superintendent report.
Thank you, Kathy Sullivan. We now move to our consent agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items D through V as presented.
Hi, it's Lori Donahue. Move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through V as presented.
Mark Rising, second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carruvas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rezak?
Aye.
A motion passes. We now move to our action items. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to approve the Indian Prairie School District 204 Board of Education proposed 2020 Illinois Association of School Boards' belief statement.
I make a motion to approve the IPSD 204 Board of Education proposed 2020 Illinois Association of School Boards' resolution belief statement.
And that was from Susan Demming and I need a second, please.
This is Kathy. I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. One Board member has put up a proposed resolution. I think it's a belief statement. I'm going to ask Susan Demming to share that statement and a reasoning for proposing such.
Thank you, President Rezak. Just a brief statement before I read the, read the belief statement. Diversity, cultural competency, social justice, and equity have recently become prevalent global topics of discussion and the state of Illinois is no exception. Many of the topics of discussion have directly impacted not only our students in Indian Prairie, but throughout our state. As we prepare for the Illinois Association of School Board Conference in November, I wanted to ascertain how our association addresses the above inherent values in our resolutions and belief statements. As I did my research, surprisingly and disappointingly, I discovered our association does not address them at all in our resolutions or belief statements. I firmly believe our association should model the leadership for member districts and I therefore submit the following belief statement and ask for approval from my fellow Board members for our district to submit for consideration by the delegate assembly. The belief statement that I have submitted is, "The Illinois Association of School Boards believes that its member districts should provide the necessary leadership for equity and inclusivity throughout their local educational communities. Districts are urged to integrate these principles in curriculum, policies, programs, and operations, ensuring every student is welcomed in a respectful learning environment." And the official statement of rationale is, "The School Board Association representing the state of Illinois must have a part of its belief statements, its unequivocal and uncompromising belief that equity must be a priority and within each district that must begin with the local Board of Education." "Schools should be found in the entire educational spectrum as the value of each student must be affirmed in all facets of their school experience. If our Board leaders provide the example, then the probability is enhanced that the inherent dignity and equal rights of each student will be recognized." Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments?
Well, thank you, Susan, for putting that together and it's, it really is unfortunate that there really was nothing already in place, so thanks for looking into that. The only comment I had was, the word welcomed to me is kind of like a first interaction with a student and I guess I thought maybe it should be welcomed and supported, like something that gives a longer-term kind of support piece to the, to the belief. That was my only thing, but I thought it was fantastic. Thank you.
Susan?
No, go ahead, Michael. Go ahead, President Rezak.
Other comments?
Mike, can I go or?
Yes.
Okay. Susan, thank you for putting this together. I think it's really relevant and we needed something like this. The one suggestion that I had is, I know we're going to be discussing an equity belief statement and I don't know if that, since this is a belief statement as well, can we use that also as part of the belief statement? I don't know how it works, but the one that we discussed today, could that be part of, you know, because that was a little more detailed, I don't know. But otherwise, I think we do need an equity statement.
Other comments?
This is Kathy. I was real pleased to see this. I think you did a great job, Susan. I guess my only question is, did you contact the Illinois State Board at all to, I mean, the School Board Association at all to ask them about it? You know, they've heard from other districts at all or anything?
I did not. I know that they will, as we, if we determine as a Board to officially submit, then I, and Kathy, you understand the process a little bit better. I think that they will review and then determine whether there are other potential ones that are submitted, but I did not contact them at all. I just saw that we did not have a belief or a positioning statement resolution and so I submitted this for our submission.
And am I correct that this is our deadline for submitting?
That is correct.
Okay.
Other comments? Mike?
Justin.
Go ahead, Justin.
Justin here. I love what you've done. I totally support it. I think, you know, as we go through a lot of the processes, you discover areas that can be improved and this is one of them. I think as we talk about the belief statement as well, what I find in going through these is we do run into some limitations and spending a lot of time focusing on some of the specific words. You know, we always just try to make it better and that's, that's, that's good, but I just don't want to slow it down and we have a deadline today. So I'd like for it to move forward and I think we can do it in such a way that when we get, that we do it where the, our delegate has some authority to change the actual position statement as they go through the process. We've kind of run into this a couple of times where we needed to make some amendments at the table in order to get it through where, you know, 99% of it would pass. So I'd like to see some flexibility for, for that. I think we all agree with what, I would think that we all agree with what's there and we would agree in concept with a lot of stuff and if we, if we need to agree in concept with some other changes proposed by other districts or recommended by the association, I think, I think I'd like to see that flexibility put into the process as well. That's it.
And I think that is part of the process, which we approve and then it goes in front of the delegated group, resolution group, and they may suggest changes and as Ms. Peel says, that would be an opportunity to see if other districts may have submitted something also and at times I've seen that they combine some of the belief statements into one. So, again, as others have stated, I was surprised when Susan submitted it for consideration. I went back and looked and did not find a belief statement or a resolution that deals with equity. So I think it's much needed. I think, I think the resolution is sufficient. I don't know if you want to combine our, I think concepts are, will be combined between our statement and the IASD statement. The IASD statement will probably be much more general than our equity statement that we'll approve later in the year. Mr. Rising?
Yeah. First of all, Susan, wonderful job. Mike and I talked, you know, one-on-one, you know, earlier in the week or last week or something like that and Mike even said, "Mark, go take a look and see if..." I couldn't, I was shocked. I was blown away, you know, and I'm reading some, through some of the belief statements and I have them in front of me and I'm like, okay, this literally should be the first or second belief statement as far as school boards go. And I, and what I loved what you did about this is that you talked about equity and inclusivity throughout their local educational communities. So to me, it's nice and broad because it allows for guiding and, and really these belief principles are supposed to guide and direct a board. So I'm hopeful, and I don't see why not, that this should be adopted immediately as a belief statement at the next meeting and this should hopefully spark conversations throughout all 800 school districts in the state of Illinois if they already haven't started to work on this already or don't already have it in place, which we know many don't. So, wonderful job. Mic drop. It was awesome. Great job.
Thank you very much, Mark. I appreciate that. Thank you for the comments from everyone.
So I need some assistance. Are we going to add an extra word and do we have to change the motion or do we, can we leave the motion as is?
Yeah, I kind of liked Lori's suggestion, welcomed and supported. You know, I thought she made a good point there, but I'll let others chime in.
I agree with that, first of all.
I think the supported is a good addition too.
Okay, Susan, you want, do you want to take back your motion and just amend it? I think that's all you need to do.
I can amend the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to amend the previous motion to, "The Illinois Association of School Boards believes that its member districts should provide the necessary leadership for equity inclusive and inclusivity throughout their local educational communities. Districts are urged to integrate these principles in curriculum, policies, programs, and operations, ensuring every student is well- ensuring every student is welcomed and supported in a respectful learning environment."
Great. Do I have a second?
Justin Carrubas' second?
I have a second by Mr. Carrubas. Any other discussion? Hearing none yet, you please call the roll.
Ms. Stemming?
Hi.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes, and a question, Jackie, before you proceed. The approval, can you amend that motion to say as presented and amended?
Sure, I can do that right now.
Or basically, we're just withdrawing that other motion, just so the computer side's looking proper.
I may not be able to reflect it until after I finish, though.
Sounds good.
Sorry, but I will be sure, I will be sure it's all included appropriately.
Thank you.
Mr. Prezak?
Hi.
Ms. Donahue?
Hi.
Ms. Peel?
Hi.
Mr. Rising?
Hi.
Ms. Grover?
Hi.
Motion passes. Next, we are moving to our discussion items. The first is our budget forecast with Mr. Strang.
This is the final forecast of the spring as we move into the summer months, where we develop, we'll be developing our draft budget for fiscal year '21. Happy to say at this point in time that the State of Illinois passed a budget and gave us some information about what the funding will look like from the state's side. Next slide, please. We'll be reviewing our revenue, both the federal, state, and local. There have been some changes since the last forecast that I shared with all of you. We'll be going over our operating fund summary and non-operating fund summary, and then finally, our continued activities, which are generally starting to move into the budget development and really drilling into individual line items. Next slide, please. The first major change is in the federal funding area. In fiscal year '20, we received $11,448,317 from the federal government. In this forecast and for fiscal year 2021, we are receiving roughly $1.2 million additionally in CARES grant funding. So our funding from the federal government is increasing by that much to a total of I've been working with Mr. Ikarius and Mrs. Pease to look at the CARES grant, and we created account numbers in Fund 10, which is education, Fund 20, which is operations and maintenance, and Fund 40, which is transportation. And we have used those account numbers for any expenditures that have been related to running the district remotely due to COVID-19 as a part of our COVID-19 response. So there's been building modifications at several of our buildings, primarily at this point in time in our central office. We've increased our purchase of personal protective equipment. We've spent money on curriculum support, including technology, and spent money on transportation and food service. So with those three account numbers now, we'll be able to tie the CARES grant money directly to those expenditures. And as new issues arrive and new needs take place, we'll be able to address that funding in that fashion. At this point in time, we have not spent much money in the CARES grant area. I believe that there's probably a full million dollars left over. There is a portion of the CARES grant that has to go to private schools, and I know that Ms. Pease talked with the private schools today and is working out a solution for that. So we're moving ahead as expected. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 264, the education funding bill, held us at the same level as our current year, fiscal year '20, which honestly was a surprise to me. That's what I built into our very first COVID-19 post-pandemic forecast. I was hoping that they would hold us harmless and hold us flat, and was surprised, quite frankly, that they did. So we are going to receive $40,365,672 from the state. I say that also recognizing that there has been years in the past when the State of Illinois has passed a budget and promised school districts revenue, and then during the course of the school year, their revenue shortfalls caused them to prorate what they promised us. So there is the chance of that. And with that in mind, I am anticipating that we're only going to receive three of four categorical payments next fiscal year. This year, we planned on four categorical payments for $8,456,000. Next year, we're planning on three for $6,342,000. So that is where I think if they do fall short in their revenue assumptions, and they have to backtrack on what they promised schools, that will probably be where they go first. They've borrowing $5 billion from the Federal Reserve program to make this happening, but honestly, if their budget shortfalls continue, they're going to have to find that revenue someplace or cut their expenditures, and I think that we're probably not going to get everything that we promised from the State of Illinois. Even with that short categorical, it's a much better state forecast than I initially anticipated. I can tell you, at this point in time, we received our third categorical payment this week. So we've received three of our four for fiscal year '20. That is the same timing that we've seen in past fiscal years. So there is a shot at us receiving our fourth categorical payment before August 30th, and we would receive four categorical payments for this fiscal year. So the state has, surprisingly, come through for us this fiscal year, and they are making promises to come through for us next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Here's a slide that I'd like the Board of Education to pay attention to, and this is something that many of you had questions of the business office on regarding our tax collection and our ability to make our payments and the liquidity of our funds due to tax collections and receipts coming in to school districts. We budgeted 50% of our funds coming in the spring and 50% of our funds coming in the fall. The collar counties gave some relief to taxpayers and had, some folks had the opportunity not to pay taxes in the spring session, but to delay their entire installment of taxes until the fall tax collection cycle. So with that being said, what we anticipate is that in, in this fiscal year, we'll receive 40% of our taxes this spring, but then 59.6% of our taxes will be collected in September. If that occurs, we will see a shortfall this year, and we would show an unbalanced budget because of the timing of those taxes. A, I imagine that most districts in the state are going to run into this issue, and if those additional taxes hit in September, we will see a large excess at the end of fiscal year '21. And this is something that we're going to pay attention to and continue to update the Board of Education on. It might require an amended budget sometime next fall after we pass the budget in September, just to clean things up when we receive that many more taxes that apply to next fiscal year that shouldn't have applied to this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Here is another change to our forecast that is different from what I shared with you the last time that we discussed our finances. I initially hoped for a .3 consumer price index, and now what is anticipated is a negative .2 consumer price index. Negative .2 CPI really would be a 0% levy increase. So if it is 0 or negative .1 or negative .2, it would essentially be a tax freeze. With that occurring, you can see from the February 10th forecast what we anticipated in local revenue, and then in the 615 forecast, what we're anticipating now in our revenue. That loss isn't entirely due to the negative .2 consumer price index, but certainly most of that is associated with that change. But we lost rental income, we lost lunch receipts, we lost fees due to field trips, and we lost fees due to extracurriculars and special programs. So I've had questions from the Board of Education about our expenditures and whether or not our work to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 would cause our expenditures to go up. They certainly will go up in certain areas, but they've also gone down in other areas. And this is another thing where our revenue has gone up in the federal area, it's been better in the state area, but in the local, we can see that we're expecting a loss in revenue. What we do have in here, which has remained consistent from the last forecast, is new construction. We're hoping to receive $45 million of new construction. Now, that is $45 million worth of construction projects throughout the district. The district would not receive that. We would receive a fraction of that, so that multiplied by the tax rate. And then, then the next year, in fiscal year '22 and in fiscal year '23, we still have $26 million of new construction across the district allocated, which, again, it would be $26 million times our tax rate. Roughly that $45 million in fiscal year '21 would bring in about $4 million in revenue to the school district. Next slide. Thank you. With that being said, you can see that all of those adjustments in fiscal year '21, we're looking at an excess of $946,156. And then we drop into a deficit scenario in fiscal years '22 and '23. One thing that we need to continue to work on as we build our forecast and start to see what the real outcomes of the finances and the state impact of COVID-19 is, is how are we offsetting some of these revenue losses with efficiencies within the district? In fiscal year '21, we're showing a reduction of five staff members. In fiscal years '22 and '23, we're still hoping for a reduction of 15 staff members. The superintendent's cabinet has had several discussions about reallocating individuals to fill classroom positions so that we don't hire externally, but we redeploy staff who are presently on our salaries internally to offset some of that expense in fiscal year '21. And as that occurs, we'll have a better idea of what our real salary expenses are. We've deferred our maintenance from Fund 20, which is in the operating fund, and are putting all of the effort to support our capital outlay of our buildings on Fund 60, which is in the non-operating area. And I know that that is a concern for the Board of Education. We spent several years coming back from the Great Recession, taking equity out of our buildings, not replacing our windows, our roofs, asphalt, tuck pointing at the rate that we should have. We were just getting back into the position of catching up on some of our deferred maintenance. But with this next, most recent financial crisis, we are back again at looking at spending $3 million annually on our buildings, which is a problem. So there is no money being spent out of Fund 20 capital outlay in the operating funds. What you can see also is that our fund balance as a percent of our revenues drops from 32.84 to 29.11. And any changes we make, both in finding new revenue sources or finding efficiencies, will quickly adjust those outer fiscal years and hopefully improve our condition. Next slide, please. Our non-operating forecast, there is a slight change to this from what you've seen last time, and I believe Board Member Peel asked a question about what was different in this, and it is that we are leaning more on Fund 60 to handle our capital outlay, construction, and building repairs. So in fiscal year '21, and in fiscal year '22, and in fiscal year '23, we are spending $3 million out of this area and not out of Fund 20. So this is a change, and that $3 million will be available for us in outer years in '24 and '25 as well. So it's certainly not the eight and a half million dollars our consultants said we should be spending on our buildings, and I'm sorry to say that if things don't change further out, we're going to start to fall into more deferred maintenance and fall back into a position of catch-up rather quickly. Next slide, please. So with all of that being said, the next board meeting on July 13th, between now and then, Mr. Shipley and myself will be working with the superintendent's cabinet to drill down and put together a draft budget. That draft budget will show all of our operating funds, not just the summary, and it will show our non-operating funds, so you can get a clear picture as we start to zero in on our spending plan for fiscal year '21. At that point in time, on July 13th, I'll be really soliciting the Board of Education for your thoughts and insights so that we can make those changes in anticipation of the Board of Education passing a tentative budget on August 10th. Once the Board passes that tentative budget on August 10th, we will post it and make it public for our community and our staff to see, and then we'll ask the Board of Education to pass the final budget on September 21st. Depending upon what happens with the State of Illinois and whether or not they can really come through with their promise in funding and what happens with our collection of taxes, fiscal year '21 might be a year where mid-year, and we start to see how our finances are playing out, we ask the Board of Education to amend the budget, but we will let you know, and we certainly have plenty of time between now and when that would occur. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Rising?
Could you go back to the, whoever's running the slideshow, can you go back to the line graph slide? There you go. Jay, so just a question, and I just thought this, I apologize and ask it sooner, but so if we're looking at fiscal year '21 here, fiscal year '22, fiscal year '23, and I'm seeing a difference of lost revenue due to COVID, three, roughly, $3 million in '21, $7 million in '22, $12 million in '23, is, is, can I be correct in saying that's a cumulative of roughly about $22 million over three years? I mean, is that a fair thing to say?
Yes, and, and Mr. Rising, that's the compounded impact of essentially a tax freeze, a 0% levy increase.
Okay, so then, go to the next slide really quick. But even though I mentioned those losses due to revenue, because we're taking the steps, well, the first thing is because of the offset from new property, but also because of the efficiency, we're taking the staffing reductions that we're potentially looking at, and the deferred maintenance that we've discussed, that's why we're only seeing a smaller excess in '21, and then only a $4 million and a $4 million loss in '22, '23, right? It's because of those steps we've already taken and you've already built into the budget, correct?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right, and we'll need to continue to find those efficiencies. And we'll need to continue to find those efficiencies as each of those fiscal years come up. Most of you have been through the recession era and the reductions that we made and the ways that we tried to tighten our belt as a school district. And that's going to have to continue until the economy starts to pick back up. And we should, we can only hope that in fiscal year twenty two, you know, I have a one point five percent Consumer Price Index built into this forecast. Maybe that comes in at a two percent Consumer Price Index. That would be, you know, a substantial jump. So there are some assumptions in fiscal year twenty two and in fiscal year twenty three on the revenue side. And as you know, I'm relatively conservative on that. So maybe our revenue comes out a little better than anticipated in those two years.
Thanks. Others? I can't see everyone such as.
Justin, Justin here.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Can we go back to the slide on the CARES Act? I think that might have been page three or four. Yes. Jay, is the one point one anticipated wholly in next fiscal year? Or did we get some in twenty twenty and some in twenty twenty one?
No, it's all next fiscal year. So any of the modifications, any of the purchases we make after July first?
Okay, so the, we have not received that money. And we anticipate receiving it after July first.
Correct.
That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
All right. Mike.
Go ahead, Susan.
Jay, two questions, actually, on the CARES Act. I know at the, at some levels and they're part of the CARES Act had to be spent on higher education. CARES Act portion of that had to be spent on directly on students. Is there any portion that says for coming into the public schools that we help, can use to help with provision of food or anything that goes directly to students or are not?
The guidelines for the CARES Act is pretty broad, and we can use it to support our school district related to COVID nineteen expenses in a variety of ways. We can do it for diverse learners, learners who are at risk, our general population, building modifications to change our way of instruction as a impact out of the COVID nineteen response, our PPE, our shift towards using more technology as we use more remote learning. And, you know, it's a sizable amount of money, but when you really look at our budget, it's not enough to really make a big difference. We're going to be ending up spending district funds other than the CARES Act money to make, make the district run in this strange environment. The key is, is just picking and choosing. And then, you know, as we spend money in certain areas, why, where are we not spending money in other areas? If the STEM school is no longer going to see face to face and they decide that they're going to be fully remote, well, we just saved a lot of money on transportation. And I know that we've already saved money in March through July in transportation. And Ron's did a great job negotiating that contract and working with our food service where we saved money. We've, we've lost money in giving refunds for events that didn't occur in the springtime. And so we've really got to see where, where things are coming and going. But at the end of the day, the unit district had an email chain that was going around. We all expect that we're going to have less expenditures in fiscal year twenty than we anticipated because of the way that we shut down schools. It's going to be how we reopen schools now that we've really got to pay attention to.
Thank you. And then just that quick note that you made regarding private schools is, is the portion of our funding that we receive from CARES have to also go to those private schools that are within our district? Or can you eliminate a little bit more on that for me?
Yeah, and Kathy Pease has really been great with this. The CARES Act is aligned to the title funding. And our title funds, a portion of our title funds have to be allocated to private schools for students who meet the low income threshold and need additional support. So every year when she writes that grant, she contacts those folks and says, you know, here's the five or six kids that you have in your school and here's the ten or twelve kids you have in that school. How do you want me to write this into the grant? The CARES Act, we have to follow it the same way. Now, the Education Secretary, Mrs. DeVos, changed what she thought should occur and thought that we should be able to allocate our funds for every student regardless of who they are in our private schools. And so there's a, there's a difference in what is coming out of her office and what the law says. We're following the law.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a question to Kathy.
Okay, Kathy.
Jay, you were talking about the, the costs with COVID. And, you know, I've, I don't know what the regulations are going to be, if they're going to stay similar. But I've heard of a lot of costs for private industry when they find a positive COVID person in their place and then they have to sanitize. Have we thought about that when we're looking at the budget for the future?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Peel. We have thought about that. Todd has been on a variety of webinars and a number of meetings with Airmark to look at different processes to sanitize our schools. I'm actually on one this week with Todd to look at ways that we can disinfect our schools on a regular basis and then disinfect our schools should we have a COVID nineteen positive situation in one of our buildings. Because as you all know, with our custodians and our food service workers and just a small bit of our teachers and administrators in our buildings, we've run into situations where we've had positive results, positive COVID cases in our schools. And we've had to close those, clean those, do some contact tracing. What we are looking at is looking at the contract with Airmark and deciding what are the things that we presently do that we can no longer support and to shift more resources to cleaning with the virus, cleaning the virus. So, you know, maybe we don't empty trash cans every day. It's every other day so that we can free up time to sanitize high-touch surfaces, things of that nature. We have paid more in overtime to make sure that our buildings are cleaned. And every time we open our buildings up to large groups, whether it's, you know, collecting the student material where we had the bag and tag going on, we shut them down and then went through and did a disinfecting clean of all of those schools. So that cost us additional money. And that's money that, you know, Todd is tracking in his account that we just developed for the COVID nineteen response.
Thank you, others.
One other, one other quick question. Jay, are, on the bus side, are we taking responsibility for, will the district have responsibility for that sanitation? Or will the bus company for our buses?
The bus company is presently there cleaning those buses, and we are paying for that.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Strang.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac. Thank you, board members.
Our next item is a remote learning update, and that will be with Kathy Pease. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight to be able to share with you an update about remote learning. This is directly connected to Board Policy six one eighty five, which is our remote education program. There's no action required tonight. It's really just an update for you, but we'd be happy to answer questions. Dougie Curious will be joining me for the last few slides. This, the purpose of tonight is connected with District Goal number one about helping all students grow socially, emotionally and academically, and to provide you with an update of the implementation of our remote learning plan. Next slide, please. We have to say thank you. We have to start with a thank you because everybody involved in this did a huge job of pivoting very quickly and moving through it with great attitudes and doing the best that they could to make this happen for our students and our staff and our families. So we're just very grateful to everyone who had a part in this. So right now, we're thinking, what just happened to us? You may remember the board and Dr. Sullivan had great foresight in thinking about e-learning when that became a possibility for us. And we started over a year ago, January, with a large committee made up of representatives from different schools, different levels, different roles within the district and created a remote, or I'm sorry, an e-learning plan under the leadership of Mike Purcell, Brian Jovanini and Al Davenport. And the Board of Education approved it on August twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And when that was approved, we thought this would be great for two days. We're set if there's a snow day, if there's a weather event, something like that. Little did we know that this was going to be a little bit more than that. But we were very thankful to have that in place because it helped us moving forward. Governor's Executive Order came out on March fifteenth, closing schools. And then on April third, we published our remote learning plan. That was a collaborative effort. We'll talk a little bit about that. And we pivoted, everybody pivoted to remote learning and moved forward. And then the last day of school was May twenty ninth, and everyone got a chance to breathe and to think about what just happened to us. So let's talk a little bit about our remote learning plan. Next slide, please. So with everything that we do, and as we've talked about before, these three things are at the forefront of all of it. To inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential, which is our mission. Our Portrait of a Graduate, which is our, what we're working towards for our students and our hopes for them. And then, of course, the social and emotional learning standards that we work, the competencies that we've worked and partnered with Castle and the Regional Office of Education to implement in our district. So wanting to keep those three things at the forefront. Next slide, please. We developed the remote learning plan. And this was developed, a great portion of it was written by our curriculum directors and then fashioned off with teaching and learning. But it came from guidelines from the State Board of Education. And within it, we outlined guidelines for district responsibilities, school responsibilities, parent responsibilities, student responsibilities. And then from that, it was translated more into what does this mean for high school by our Teaching and Learning Department? What does this mean for middle school? And what does it mean for elementary and preschool? One of the greatest things about writing this remote learning plan was that our students in grades two through twelve already had devices. So we were fortunate that the board had made a commitment to that previously because our students not only had the devices and were able to use them, but were familiar with the apps and how to find things. And our teachers were familiar with how to help them to navigate that and some of the software and things like that that would help support them in this remote learning plan. Next slide, please. So we can't go any further without talking about the collaboration. This was the ultimate in collaboration in my mind when you look at not only the teams within our central office who collaborated together, technology with curriculum instruction and teaching and learning and student services, support services, business office, human resources, everyone working together to try to put some things together, but also within our buildings and the teachers working on their teams, working together to try to figure things out, administrators, teaching assistants. But within our district, we had a lot of collaboration to make this work. But this was something that was happening across not only the state, but as well as the nation. And many of our, Dr. Sullivan, as well as many of our other staff members, were communicating with people from other districts nearby, but also across the state and across the nation. And every article that came through looking to see what's somebody else doing or what kind of an idea do they have? Because everyone was trying to pivot and trying to figure this out and how to make this work best for our students and their learning. Next slide, please. The other piece that was a huge component for making this work was our support center. And you may remember that Adam Smeets and his staff had worked on creating the support center a year ago or so. And we, Curriculum Department jumped on and it has some other departments that were in it. But this was instrumental in supporting our students, our staff and our families. This was one place that people could go and get answers. They could request service for technology, for food service, transportation and curriculum instruction. We were able to place ideas for instruction as well as professional development on demand. So if a teacher was working at a time that wasn't between the hours of nine to five, they could learn about a digital tool they might want to use in their classroom. They could find an article about it, see a video. They could request, make a request for help to get access. And they could also look at our frequently asked questions. It's, you know, Dougie Curious sent out emails and we published all those questions in one place so that teachers could go back and think, I saw that somewhere. Let me go back and see if my question was already answered. I'm very proud to say that over eight thousand eight hundred and twenty seven support tickets were resolved between March fifteenth and May twenty ninth. So that is a great deal of use. And I think one of the biggest comments I've heard is how quickly people received a response from the support center. So this was huge in helping us to pivot and helping support our teachers and our students and our families in making remote learning work for them. So we're very grateful for the support center and for Adam Smeets and his teams' work on that and their partnership. Next slide, please. As we worked through remote learning, we wanted to know what's working? What's, what's a celebration? What's working for you? What are some challenges you're facing? And what more support could we provide or could have provided during this time? We know that this may not be the last time that we are involved in remote learning. But it's interesting, as we worked through the surveys, we found some things that we could use no matter what the learning environment is. So we sent these out, we staggered them out, and we had over forty five hundred families respond to our surveys, over eighteen hundred staff members and over sixty seven hundred students respond to the surveys. Next slide, please. So the first, one of the things that we asked were challenges. And we know that throughout this whole time, everyone was doing the best that they could, working through it, trying to figure out a new idea, sharing a new idea and working through, because people were dealing with not only a pandemic, but also trying to learn and trying to instruct. So this was a huge undertaking for everyone involved. And so some of the challenges that came out of the survey and from all three groups, it was referenced the lack of the face-to-face interactions as a challenge. You know, things were happening digitally. But what this told us was that human interaction and walking into that school and seeing your friends, seeing your other teachers, working with your teacher as a student, being able to have lunch with someone is still very important to all three groups that we surveyed. Another common challenge was workload. And we found from families and from staff that balancing being a caretaker, whether it be taking care of a family member, being a parent or, and balancing that with working was difficult at times and trying to figure out how to do all those things at once. And for some, still instructing, as teachers still instructing their own students or as a parent, working, caring for someone and then trying to help support their students and their learning. And then both families and staff conveyed that they were concerned about meeting the needs of their students. Teachers didn't have all the tools that they usually have, didn't have that face-to-face interaction. And for some of our families, they felt like, I'm not really a teacher. I don't know if I'm helping my. And for some of our families, they felt like, I'm not really a teacher. I don't know if I'm helping my student as much as they need to be helped. So these are some challenges that we can take a look at as we move forward, no matter what our learning environment is. The next three slides will show you just some of the responses from the individual surveys. Next slide, please. So the first one was from our families. What was, is your primary concern about your child learning remotely? And what we found was peer and teacher interaction, ensuring that their child is prepared for the next level and concern about a possible education gap, lack of access to materials. So we found a lot of our families were missing the library or books from the classroom libraries. And having just that physical book in their hand, we were able to provide some digital resources there, but wanting to read more, which we were thrilled with. We want our students to want to read more. And then used to some of the worksheets that they've been had and some of how we communicate with those, how, how the work's being done. Student workload and opportunities to increase workload. So some families, you know, wanted more. They wanted more work for their students. And then increased concerns if the parent was doing enough for their child. Next slide, please. Is, we asked the staff, are there any barriers that might prevent you from maintaining your normal workload when you're working from home? And you can see that that caregiver responsibility, as well as running at their own household and having a different workspace were some of the challenges. And then they listed some other things, but mainly it was, we heard loud and clear that balancing all of the being at home and all of the things that go into home was different for them than being at school and having that dedicated work time and workspace. Next, please. And then for our students, we asked them how they felt about the amount of work assigned. The majority of them said they had just the right amount of work to do. And then second was leaning just a little bit towards, I had way too much work to do, which is something that we expected from our students. The next slide talks about celebrations. So we wanted to know what was working for you and what did we, how did we support you and what worked well as far as with the remote learning. Communication was a celebration from the majority of our respondents. They appreciated the communication from the district as well as from the teachers and the building representatives, the principals. All three groups were appreciative of having the devices as we talked about before. And then for kindergarten and first grade, we were able to deliver a learning packet. So they appreciated having those tools as well as tools online that they could use for their students, the digital tools. And then the other celebration that was conveyed to us was access to support was a positive. They got prompt responses on their requests from food service for more materials for some help accessing those materials and that staff got back to them. So our teachers were prompted getting back to them to help answer their questions. And they were very appreciative of that. Next, please. So when we looked at families, we asked them what's working well as your child is working from home? And these were very interesting. So they, they told us that a routine and a checklist from their teacher were helpful, which is something for us to take, move forward should we be in the remote learning environment again. They enjoyed their child's interactions with their teacher and peers on Zoom. Google Classroom, which is our method for delivering some of our learning resources and assignments. Our teachers use that. They appreciated having Google Classroom access for their students. Students were very appreciative of that as well. The added flexibility for students to work at their own pace and within their own timeframe. We heard from some families that their child was able to budget time a little bit and take more frequent breaks. They appreciated the access to the support from the district staff and their teachers and the use of Chromebooks. They were appreciative of having those within their household as well. Next slide, please. So we asked the staff, how have you been feeling in the past week? And the reason we did this was we, we knew this was a point in time and that depending on what was happening in the world, in their own household or with students within their class, this could change at any time. So this was the week of April 22nd and the average rating was at 3.3, which is just a little bit over okay, moving towards great. So we just wanted to gauge where they were and ask them a few questions about how they were feeling. Next, please. And then we asked the students how they felt about remote learning. We tried to put this in student language, so the majority of our students said it's okay. And then moving a little bit towards awesome, I love remote learning. And then some were, I really don't like it. So this was a spread that we felt like would, was typical for our students, but we were happy to see that the majority of them felt that it was okay, that they made, they worked through it. Next slide, please. So our next steps as we move forward, and I'm going to turn it over to Doug, but to use the information that we've learned through this pivot into remote learning and the things that we've gathered that were celebrations as well as challenges to support the overall experience and planning for the next school year for 2020, 2021. Thank you. And I'll be happy to answer questions if you want to go ahead and go through the next three slides with Doug and then we can go back to questions after that. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members. And thank you Kathy for all of your hard work, especially during remote learning and everything to help us get through this unexpected situation that we dealt with. Obviously, we're similar to a lot of school districts in the state of Illinois where we're struggling without some concrete guidance from this Illinois School Board of Education. Our most recent guidance was really focusing still on Restore Illinois and what to do if you're in phase three, phase four, phase five. So we felt the most important thing we could do is start really looking at a framework that we can operate from while we waited for that guidance so that we could figure out how are we going to reopen schools? Obviously, most important to us is making sure that we're supporting students academically, socially and emotionally. And our goal is we want students, and you can see from the survey, we want them to take part in in-person learning as much as possible while still adhering to the latest guidance from public health officials. So we figured the first thing that we do is we need to invent our plan for reopening. We have to develop that plan. And then the second part of that is to validate that plan. We want to see, you know, use it with research, requirements of the community health department and the State Board of Education requirements. So that's the big area that we need more guidance on and that we're waiting for guidance on. We've been doing a lot of researching. We've been looking at other states and the different plans that they've been putting out, whether it's Pennsylvania, Maryland, and trying to take pieces from here and there to see what would work for our school district. We've been trying to collaborate with other school districts across the state as well in trying to think about what kind of things are out there. And then obviously, once we have a plan in place, it's going to be critical that we monitor that plan along the way and make modifications as necessary. You can go to the next slide. Obviously, at the center of this is public health. We, Indian Prairie Tool 4 has always made it very clear that student safety is a top priority. And we want to acknowledge that the safety of our students, our families, our staff, our community is critical for us. And so we're looking at this from four different kind of categories or larger topics that fall within our framework. Obviously, it starts with instructional and core SCL. Operations is going to be a huge part to that, then stakeholder communication. And then how are our resources and how does, what impact does it have on our resources? You can go to the next slide just for a further breakdown of those. You flip to the next slide, please. So under the framework with instructional core and SCL, and we do feel that this is the driver. As I said, our goal is to bring back students in person as much as possible. We know that we have to make sure that to help our students grow socially, emotionally and academically, we have to make sure that we have solid curriculum in place and how we're going to instruct student, instruct students. We also know that the social emotional wellbeing of students is going to be critical as well as for our staff. Whatever kind of model we're having to use at the time, depending on where, what kind of guidance we get from both our, our health officials as well as from the state, we've got to make sure that we're monitoring that along the way. And once we have that guidance, you know, we're going to have a big focus on school schedules as well as staff schedules. How do we make everything work? You know, currently under Restore Illinois, if we're in phase four, we know that, you know, we can't have gatherings of more than 50 and we want clarification of how that impacts schools. And still having physical distancing. So if we need to still have people six feet apart, how many students can we fit in a classroom? What does that look like for our teaching staff and what does that look like with curriculum? So from there, you know, we have to look at what are all the operational things that go with that? So we want to focus on our curriculum and teaching and learning. And then what are the operations that are going to make that happen? Obviously, we have technology. We have to make sure we're staffed appropriately. We've got to look at our facilities and maintenance of those facilities. What do we have to use? How are they identified? How are we cleaning them? What transportation is going to be necessary to make our plans work? Obviously, food services and then, and extremely important health services. What PPE are we going to need? How are we going to operate? You know, Jay talked a little bit about contact tracing and current guidance with taking temperatures and doing all those types of things is, is going to be something that has to stay in our mind. And then huge is going to be communication. We've got to communicate to our students and families, to our staff, our community partners, obviously the Board of Education. We're, we're hopeful to, you know, present a plan to the Board of Education at the next board meeting on July 13th as a big push in our communication of how we're going to reopen schools. And then obviously the impact that it has on area businesses. And then we have to keep in mind all of our resources. What, how is this impacting our funding and our budget? We've got to look at our resource of time, all the people, our facilities, and then obviously professional developments. How do we make all this work? How do we support teachers in learning to continue supporting our students? So once again, they can achieve their greatest potential. So that's the framework we have outlined. We hope to get more guidance. We've, we've been hoping that we would have gotten guidance and we're going to continue to, to, you know, seek that guidance and get guidance from the state so that we can, you know, concretely make those plans for reopening for next year. And with that, I don't know if there's questions for Kathy or myself.
Okay, comments or questions? Just jump in.
I'm not sure, probably, well, either one of you, you know, as we look at, we, we had some great success. And as we look at those families that weren't able to participate as much as would have been desired in our remote learning opportunities, how do we ensure that we're able to provide them with what they need, you know, especially if we find ourselves in the same dilemma in the very beginning of school? Or what, what are we doing as far as that reach out and assisting those families?
One of the things we recently did was we also sent out registration for next school year to all of our families. And we did include some questions on that registration, asking one about parents and sending their kids to school and how they're feeling about that. Another one was their connectivity and that had helped give us some guidance to know, are they struggling to connect? If we were in a remote environment and how we can support them. We also had a question about transportation and then about food service. So we use that as an opportunity that we knew we would have the attention of our families to try to gather some additional information from them. Kathy, I don't know if you have anything to add for that.
Yeah, I would just add that we learned a lot about how to engage students and families and how to support our students so that our parents don't always have to be there to do that. So, you know, we've been identifying teachers who did some different things, sharing those ideas. And throughout that, when you talk to teachers throughout this time for remote learning, they've talked about their growth and being able to use WeVideo or Flipgrid or things that they might not have used before that they've found to be very engaging for students. Because we know part of, well, the biggest factor in any learning is having that teacher that you want to work for and you want to see. And so our teachers have figured out some great ways in doing that and engaging them. And we've been able to support them. We've got a lot of good professional learning going on this summer that teachers have been signing up for. We asked them to take a break and to figure out what just happened, but they've been looking at some of those things that they, they're thinking, if we have to go to this again, this might be something I want to use or I want to do a better job with. So I think there's a lot of factors that go into supporting our families. Obviously, the food service is huge and meeting those needs, those basic needs, you know, Maslow first before Bloom. And looking at those things. And if, I think some of that communication of those needs comes through that teacher that both parents and students trust. So there's a lot of good things happening and a lot of things that we've learned that we can now take and share with everybody if things have to move forward.
Mike, this is Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just want to say, I really appreciated the surveys. I think those were excellent way to find out some information. And you had great results, real positive results. But I was just wondering if there was any kind of tracking of like, you know, low income students or race, all those kinds of factors, any demographics that were, you attempted to do with that?
We did not. We did not have them identify any of those demographics. We felt that might be a barrier to some of that, but we have, I know our teaching and learning assistant hoops have talked to different buildings about engagement and levels of engagement and kind of working through it that way. But we did not track demographic in these surveys.
Other questions?
I was just going to ask, the level of engagement overall was pretty high though for students participating in remote learning during the, the two months, correct?
I, I think so. And I think, you know, you have to take a look at that compared to the state telling us, telling everyone that grades could not be hindered or could not go down during this time. So if you look at the level of engagement for students who knew that, for those that were motivated by grades, I think that's, that's helpful. I think that's a, was a difficult piece and that came out through the survey as well. Is not, you know, students, we've got, we've got questions in the support center. If I already have an A, do I have to do the work and those kinds of things? So I think you have to look at that level of engagement compared to what the guidelines were as well and compare it that way.
Mark. One just quick question is two brief comments. So not saying, you know, we're waiting for guidelines, right, from ISB. So we have no idea what they may say. I think we have some idea and we've played around with different ideas. I just have a kind of a technology question that I'm sure Kathy or Doug can answer. Adam doesn't have to answer it, but I'm assuming we've looked at the possibility of kids even being from home and remotely seeing the teacher in the classroom if we can have limited, if we have to have limited classrooms. So I'm assuming we have that technology available. It would be similar to a Zoom. They would just see the teacher in the classroom. We could do something like that, correct? I'm assuming.
You know, Mark, there could be a lot of challenges with that that we would have to work through.
No, I know. And I don't want to get ahead of myself. I was just asking if we have that ability. So yeah, I won't make you answer that.
Yeah, we, we've been having some discussions around that and some of the challenges and, and I guess some of the positives and negatives associated with that in trying to figure out what would that look like? Because we do know at times that we're going to have students that we might be in person, but they don't feel comfortable or family doesn't feel comfortable with them coming to school. And how are we going to still support education at that time? So those are conversations we're having. So those are conversations we're having. And there are some challenges associated with it.
Yeah, and I guess that was kind of more of where I was going, not necessarily of what a model might look like, but, you know, engaging kids as much as possible, right? Because who knows what it's going to look like? But, you know, but, but having said that, oh, sorry.
Are you talking about like the hardware we are to do that and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, more or less.
We would need some different, you know, we've had some brief conversations about what actually technology hardware we would need to make things like that work as well. And there would be some different things we have to do there and obviously test different things with it.
Yeah, because, you know, and I'm sure my fellow board members sharing this same comment I'm about to make is that, you know, of course, we're concerned about all the kids and the way they learn. But, you know, our academically at-risk kids, our special ed kids, you know, I have to imagine they're really hurting and, you know, something we can't measure. We can measure the kids who weren't engaged in what group they might fall into. But something we all can't measure is that a social, social emotional piece, you know? I mean, that's just, can't measure that. And then as far as one of your questions or the questions that you ask the students, just to comment on that, that I need more work, said no kid ever. So I'm just, I'm just saying that.
You never know, you never know.
All right, thanks.
I will just add, Mark, that the $1 million project, I'm sorry, Adam, if I didn't say that name right, but with the connectivity and the hotspots and things like that, that was huge.
Yeah, I mean, right?
Yeah, for getting the connectivity going and the work with Comcast and things like that. So, you know, when you talk about things in place, that was huge for helping support our families.
Other comments or questions?
Can I make a comment? I'd like to make a comment. I know there's always room for improvement and not all students were engaged. But I did witness my student being very engaged, the teachers. What I appreciate about all the teachers at this moment, they were asking the students how they felt. And it was somebody that the student sees every day that they trust and they could talk about their feelings, what was going on in the world, how it was affecting them. And so it was really good for the teacher to be engaging the student that way. It was not just studying, but it was also being there for them. And it was a way of the students to socialize with their other kids through Kahoot or whatever they were doing. They were laughing, they were having fun, they were doing PE pushups. So they were engaged, it was working. And so thank you to everyone who put this together. Thank you.
Others? Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Kathy. We are now going to move to our next discussion item, which is our equity belief statement. On May 11th, the Board of Education began discussing an equity statement. Of course, that was prior to the events in Minneapolis and across the country. More than ever, it appears that we know how important it is to have a statement that embraces all our students. So at our last meeting, Susan stepped forward to collect possible statements. Again, we're at a discussion stage, so I'm going to turn it over to Susan.
Thank you, Mike. Next slide, please. Thank you. Just, we went over these last week, so I don't want to spend too, too much time. We condensed some of this, Mike and I talked, and so we condensed a number of different slides. But basically, the very first point is, you know, aligned to our district mission. And one of our board policies, number three, was to adopt an equity policy. We hope with our statement that it will guide the practice of our board and the school district and help move us into the actual development of a policy. One of the things that's really, really important is that the equity statement is not the end-all. It is the beginning, it is not the work. But it is, we feel as a board that it's really important for us to indicate when anyone comes to look at the IPSD 204 website that we are addressing equity. And they see that it's a guidepost for the equity work of the district, providing a framework to focus on racial equity at all levels. And then again, our statement's just going to reinforce that equity practices are a priority for our district. And as I said, we want to ensure that all of our families, our entire community, our staff, our administration know that equity is a priority for our district. Next slide, please. So we talked about the process last time. We're here tonight to hopefully come to a decision-making on what that equity statement looks like in order that it can be shared with a number of key constituency groups and provide, ask for feedback on the statement that we so decide on. Once we gain that feedback and garner it, then we will finalize that particular statement. It will be included as part of our district literature and become a driving force for the practice and the continuation of equity work within our district. Next slide, please. ISB Policy, Educational Equity, that's part of their overall policy guidelines, not part of resolutions or belief statements, but part of the, are their policies. And we talked about this statement, but basically, every student just having access to resources and rigor that are right for their education, regardless of a number of the different qualifying factors that are listed there. Next slide, please. And then ISB also has an equity statement. And we included these, but we reviewed these last time as well. And basically, you know, it states Illinois has an urgent and collective responsibility to achieve educational equity by ensuring all policies, programs, and practices reaffirm the strengths that each and every child brings with their diverse backgrounds and life experiences, delivering comprehensive supports, programs, and the opportunities they need to succeed. Mike, I thank you for the initial comments that you had as we began this particular process, just sort of reiterating a little bit of what I shared earlier. But we've also seen within the last couple of weeks how critical it is for us to ensure that every child is affirmed and recognized for the values that they bring. Next slide, please. Different thoughts, these we talked about last time. Don't really want to go over these again, but we chatted. Just, we know that it's really important for us to address the achievement for all students. And that's one of the things that stood out for us as we knew that we wanted to have an equity policy. One of the last couple of things, we definitely want to ensure that everything that we do, the work that we wind up doing for equity is all driven by data. We want to be sure that we take a look at anything and everything that we do and that there is a data piece to it so that we can look at how far we are coming and how far we are going. We can measure what that success is. So as that practice and our policies and the actual work continues and something begins, we want to be sure that we can measure how we are coming. And then one of the things that is really key, many of us have understood as we've attended various sessions and heard presentations regarding the equity work that has happened in different districts, it's taken a long time for many districts to accomplish their task. So we want to begin with the statement. We know that the work has to, we can't wait for the statement for the work to begin and we already have begun work, but it has to continue. And we know that while our policy is being developed, that the work has to be ongoing at the same time. Thank you for the next slide, please. So this is where we started last week, or I'm sorry, back in May. And this was the starting point for the first possible statement that Mike had presented us with. And I think we have a total of, I believe, five or six that we have a chance to engage and determine what we feel is the best one for us to move forward in as far as presentation is concerned. So do, Mike, did you want me to read each statement?
I don't know if we need to read each one, but I think each one should be displayed for a few seconds so everybody can look at them. Yes. So why don't we go to number two? Maybe the other one?
Not, I'm sorry, not, not the second slide. Go back, please.
I'm sorry, page eight.
Go, yeah, page eight. So, so the first one, that first one was the one that Mike had presented. The second one, and all of these, and I first have to say thank you because many people submitted different statements. Many people looked at some that we already had, the ones that we started with Mark and gave some additions and subtractions. And then some people gave totally new statements. So hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look and see what's, what stuck out to them and have an idea of what they think would be our best place to begin. But this was the second one. Next slide, we'll go through, I'll let all threes come up. And I mean, each of the slides come up and then we'll go back for a discussion. This is number three. Next slide, please. Next slide. And then number six, please. Oops. Okay, thank you. You can just, we can hold it there or move to the final, the end slide. Thoughts? One of the, there were a couple that were, couple that were basically taken off from what Mike had presented last time and some additions and subtractions. I guess one of the first things that we might do is just see if we have, almost are close to a consensus at all. But just give me your thoughts on if anybody feels extremely strongly about one or the other or particular things that they feel should be included, should not be included. We had five different, five different submissions.
This is Kathy. I'm hearing feedback.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I really liked the, the last one that you just had, number six. I thought it was well-written. I like the verbiage on it. And it was to the point and not too long.
Can you go back to number six for me, please? Slide, the slide right before this, thank you.
Yeah. I don't know who wrote that, but I thought they did a really nice job. And a couple of things I do want to say before we get too far. I realize in Karen's proclamation, we never gave her credit for also hiring an equity director for the district first equity director we ever had. And when I think about the equity statement, I think it's been really hard for these last few weeks to consider this at the same time as everything was going on. So one of the things I keep thinking about is, and it's nothing to do with the statement as much as it is to do with the board itself and this board and future boards of being able to carry this out. I know last time I talked about how urgent this is just based on the COVID exposure. So, but I do think this one does a pretty good job. I guess I'm just voicing, we really need to be behind it 100% and educate ourselves. I know I have felt like I thought I knew a few things. I think that there was way more I didn't know and I've learned in the last few weeks that really is pushing me. And I think it's really important for the board to educate ourselves so that we are the ones pushing this forward. But I, I like number six.
Other comments?
Hey, this is Mark, I'll jump in real quick. I particularly liked six and three. And kind of the same reason I thought it puts the onus on us as a board to be the driving factor. But it pledges that we involve all the stakeholders as well. Six kind of did that as well. So yeah, I liked, I liked three and six the best personally.
And I want to share which one. Oh, go ahead, Mark.
So I will tell you with six, I had a couple of concerns. One was that I read, I love the word thrive. I thought that was a good word. But when I read that sentence that says, "Every student has access to all resources, allowing them to thrive and feel empowered to achieve their greatest potential," I kind of read that to kind of put the burden on the student to have them achieve and reach their potential. So I was a little concerned with that. I also am not a huge fan of putting this data-driven in the statement because I don't see that anywhere else in any statements and things we have in our district. I think doing things with data is something that we should be doing across the board and it shouldn't be spelled out in the equity piece as something specifically stated. And I also wonder sometimes what does that really mean? Like, would we have to have data before we did something? I mean, it's like, it's a measurement, but it also could be a control factor. So I had a little bit of concern about the data-driven part. And I also have concern about listing, specifically listing students, educators, family, and community partners because it's like, well, our administrator's in there too. Or, you know, it's like, when you start creating lists of specific pieces, it's always a possibility you're going to leave somebody out or something out that that, you know, maybe doesn't feel like they're included. And so I kind of sway towards more general statements rather than listing things. So that was my three points on this one.
So one of the things that hit me, I'm kind of on the opposite end. I've received some feedback, of course, when we have these board meetings, people start emailing you, and they've specifically requested to include people, especially the students, into the statement so that they would feel that they were part of this. Oftentimes in equity work, people think that it's top-down driven, and I'm hearing what everyone's saying. You know, we need to embrace this and accept the responsibility for this, but we need to include people in this process. And so I got, I did receive public feedback that said, "Could you please include some groups, especially the students, so that they would feel part of it?" The other thing with the data-driven, oftentimes people feel that it's easy to say, "Oh, we're doing okay." And sometimes that suffices as, as a report. And I hear what you're saying, that the data-driven could provide a hindrance as much as it could help. But we know that our achievement needs to improve. We need to look at our academic, our discipline practices and our opportunity practices. And it just kind of reinforces that we need to look at our data in order to do that. So just a different point of view. You gave me things to consider, though, Lori, so thanks. Others?
We have to remember this is the board's equity mission statement, right? So we engage those groups mentioned, but we also have to remain data-driven as a board, right? As long as we're engaging those groups mentioned. So, I don't know.
And again, we're not at the approval stage. We're at a point of providing it to our stakeholders just to have them have a go at it also. I don't think I've heard from Justin or Natasha, so Justin, do you want to chime in here?
Yeah, I go back to what I said before about progress over perfection. Once again, I think, although very well-intentioned by everybody here, I think we spend a lot of time worrying about whether it's input we receive or how this word could impact something over and over another thing. I would like to see it progress. I think, much like equity in of itself, the statement is not going to be perfect, and we are going to revisit it, and we're going to amend it, and we're going to change it, and we're going to improve it. I would like, I would like to see us approve a statement, and then, you know, at the same time, we can work on making it better. My personal preference is for the statement on page 10, number four. I like that it leads with our mission and builds the equity into the mission. I would remove the regardless of gender and sexual orientation, the, the subgroups, but retain the balance of that statement.
Can you go to 10, please? Thank you.
So you see how it begins with a mission, builds into equity as part of the mission. So I like this statement overall. If we could remove the different subgroups there, just because I feel that that is an ever, will never be an inclusive list. The US Supreme Court just came out today with an opinion saying that sex includes gender and, you know, gender orientation, and so there's, you know, it's going to be a constantly evolving thing. So I just like the general statement. So I, but in all honesty, I could get behind each one of these statements to see progress. I don't think, none of these pop out at me and say, "I would feel that the board would, would hurt the community by coming forward with any of these statements."
Thank you.
Natasha?
So when I was reading the statements, I was looking for a few things, mentioning all students, which they do. Then I noticed some of them talked about barriers in the past, which I liked in the statement, and it talked about how it's ongoing. So you have to look at the past as well as progression. The other one was the stakeholders. And so I actually liked number four the best with removing, like Justin said, removing the different subgroups in it, because it does talk about all students. It has our mission statement in there. It has about how equity is ongoing, and they're removing the barriers. So it was, everything was there, but I will back up any statement that you guys consider because all of them were great.
Did we hear from everybody except for me? Mike? Mark? Do we hear from you, Mark? Okay. So I wanted to go last. I, I liked six, and one of the things that, as I read different things about, from some of the different presentations that we've been to and had, one of the things that they talked about was being, listing positive in value. And so I definitely like the, or recognize the fact that speaking about barriers and those being removed, to me, that's sort of inherent in the reason why we're putting, why we're doing the work. And for me, I felt starting to list barriers, that there might be something that was left off, and, and that was my, one of my reasons for probably staying away from barriers. And then I've talked, we talked about equity, we talked about discipline and achievement gap. For me, the data is really important, just that the whole measuring aspect, to me, is extremely critical because I just don't know if, how we can determine where we've come from and where we're going and how we're doing if we don't have some type of measurement factor there. So those were, those are my thoughts. So I hear, I think Mark had number three and number six. Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, but, and I loved your comments, Susan, but as I read six more, I'm just, my only concern with six, so actually I'm changing it to three and four, with, with Natasha and Justin's suggestion. And the only reason is on number six, I just worry that it's kind of moving away from a mission statement because it starts talking about "has access to resources," and I think that's more work of the equity team and "thrive and empowerment." While I think those are wonderful words and things we should strive for, I think that's more around the work than what should be really a mission statement. So I'm kind of back to three and four.
And, and the only reason that I, the only reason that I like, I like the accountability for us. And, and one of the things that I did want to say, I love the fact that people mentioned that we have to be involved, or we need to be part of this. I hope that as we move forward, that we, and however that development comes, and the continuation of some of the things that Jen's involved in and has done, I think it's really important that we are, we are experiencing what the staff, administrators, teachers, and as we move forward, students, I really think it's important for us to experience it as well. So I'm hearing four, number four, and I'm hearing number six.
So I, I said what I didn't really like about six, but I like four with the same changes that Natasha and Justin were proposing, like taking out the list.
Okay, so then what, so what should we, so it sounds like we probably have, sounds like we're close to number four, I think, then.
I certainly could, this Kathy, I could go with four, too, taking out that list. I would agree. I think they were all very good statements. I could prefer six, but I think Justin's right. Let's, let's approve one. They all say policy in there. I'm really.
Can you go back to number, slide 10 for me, please? Thank you. So tell me exactly what it would, excuse me. Justin, can you tell me exactly what the reading would be?
I, I think it is just removing everything, starting with regardless and going to background. So I, I think it's just trying to separate things out. I think we have a lot in there that is enough to present to the community and try to get their feedback on, and maybe in that process, this statement is improved. But just taking out that balance of the summit, of the sentence after the comma, regardless to background.
Okay, all right.
So Natasha, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
And preference?
No, I think, I think that's great. I said four. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's fine.
Can I suggest maybe we have educate families, educators, and stakeholders include students in there? I thought, I did like that on the other one.
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
So we're not taking a vote today, but it appears that we have some level of consensus. So Susan, I think we go back with that statement, and then we'll work with our superintendent and a half in order to try to get this to our internal stakeholders for feedback. It'll probably take some time because it's the summer, but, you know, we can get this out and get feedback, and then we can act as a board to accept a statement. Today's job is just to come to consensus. It appears that we have done so. Are we good to move on? I guess that's a yes. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Legislative update. There will be a Lenn meeting on Thursday. Lenn sent out a survey today asking, I'm certain, two-page superintendents, some questions in regards to COVID and how they would like the state guidelines to look, meaning should they look more like everybody has local control and has some freedom, or do they would want guidelines across the board? That was the basic gist of the survey. So there's going to be discussion on Thursday, and those results will be shared. As everyone said today, ISBE, the Illinois State Board of Education, has not released its guidelines as of yet. And so we await those, and also await what our public health department is going to say based on those guidelines to help us. I appreciate the work. I guess I'm going to the Board of Education update of all our administrators and central office administrators who are, who developed the framework that we saw and coming up with multiple plans of implementation based on the guidelines that we receive. So thank you, everyone, for that work, and we'll keep the board updated, and we will keep the community updated as we receive more guidelines. I want to thank all our high school administrators for all the work that they did in terms of passing out the graduation boxes, celebration boxes. That clearly was a highlight for many students, and it was a highlight for those people who delivered the boxes. I got to see them, put them together. Oh, my goodness. You forget, as Dr. Sullivan said, over a couple thousand students, and boxes were delivered to all of them. So thank you. Thank you for the graduations. Clearly, it does not replace Northern Illinois University, but they were well-done and professional, and we do want to honor all our seniors for their work in our district. And congratulations to our seniors and good luck in your future. You won't be defined by this, and if you're defined by it, you're going to be better for it. So thank you for all your work. As a reminder again, Starting Right Workshop is on Wednesday. Again, it's a meeting with Dr. Calley and the board to look over our communication systems and norms. There is no action that's going to be taken. I want to thank PDAC, some of PDAC, and Jen Rowe. Some students for Your Information Board did reach out to Jen and to Sylee and wanted to talk about the events in Minneapolis, and they did very quickly put a Zoom meeting together. They did invite Kathy and I, as we served as advisors to PDAC. But if future meetings are held, we'll get two other board members to participate. The students were incredible in terms of their insights, and we should hear them. They were just wonderful. And finally, I was remiss not to thank Natasha and Lori Donahue for all their work with the policies. We didn't bring one forward, but they worked long and hard and did tons and tons of research on proposed policies that at this time, they did not feel that they should bring forward to the board. But I know how hard they worked and the amount of work that they did, and I just want to recognize them in public for everything that they did. I wish Dr. Sullivan was next to me. Are you still there, Dr. Sullivan?
I'm still here.
Oh, good. Yeah.
I'm still here.
I, if this was without COVID, I think we would all be giving each other a hug. And thank you again. I guess we need to give you a virtual hug.
Virtual hugs all around.
So thank you for, again, all the work that you've done and kept us on the straight and narrow. We really appreciate it. And with that.
Mike?
Yeah.
Um, I think we should congratulate our two board members who had students graduating.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Who, yeah. So congratulations to Tim and Anavi. I watched the, the ceremonies this morning, and also I just got to say, every time, they, they each have their own personalities that reflect the principles, and it's always fun to watch that. And, but, so congratulations to your students. I hope you guys got a picture with your, your gowns and your kids' gowns together.
You want to talk about senioritis? You do electronic learning, and you can't get a lower grade in your graduating?
Justin, I didn't know if you were talking about yourself or. Justin, I didn't know if you were talking about yourself or your.
I still have some eligibility left.
Oh, congratulations, Natasha and Justin.
Yes, congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
So please identify yourself as you make a motion to adjourn meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
Justin Carubis, motion to adjourn.
Natasha, I'm first, second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, Karen.
Bye, Jackie.
Bye, Karen.
Bye-bye.
Jackie.
Bye, thank you so much.
Bye, Karen. Have fun.